Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the school committee for April 8th. Please stand if you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to say before we start that this, oh, roll call. That's what I want to say before we start.
Kathleen Amorall.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Wes Coughlin.
Here.
Mary Beckwith.
Here.
John Noons.
Yep.
So this meeting is being recorded for, well, livestreamed and recorded for people to watch after. We broadcast on DCTV Channel 9 on Wednesdays and Thursdays at 5:00, Fridays at 6:00 a.m., Saturdays 8:00 a.m., Sundays at 2:00 p.m., and then also rebroadcast on DCTV Channel 18 on Monday and Saturday at noon and Thursday at 3:00. So to begin the meeting, as we always do, I welcome anyone to step up to the microphone, state your name. We've allotted 10 minutes for public comment regarding any item on this evening's agenda. So anyone that wants to say anything for public comment.
Speak your words.
Hearing none and seeing no one making the move, that's it. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Saban McGuire to introduce our.
You got approval of minutes?
Oh. I thought I would get it one of these meetings, but so I will entertain a motion for the regular session minutes for March 25th.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes. And I also will take a motion for the executive session minutes for that same evening of March 25th.
So move, Madam Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is completed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Noons, second by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then Mary would be abstention for not being, yeah. That's okay. One, so it passes four.
Four, zero, one. That would be both regular.
Year one for both regular and executive session minutes for March 25th, 2024. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Saban McGuire.
Thank you. So I see the Quinn School team is here. I'm going to invite whoever is going to be presenting this evening. So I see the admin team is coming up to the microphone. I see some teachers from the Quinn School are also with us this evening. So we're excited to hear and to see what you have to share with us.
Good evening. First, we just want to thank you all for this opportunity to present Quinn Spotlight on Kids. Over the past several years, we've tried to show our uniqueness that Quinn School has. Some of you might recall that we've talked in the past about our fifth grade peer leaders. We've talked about STEM initiatives. We've also showcased our entire staff and how hard they work and their dedication, as well as our PBIS initiative.
This year, we're excited to present on how the Quinn School celebrates being inclusive and unified. And in doing so, we're very fortunate to have some of our staff here. And I'm going to talk a little slow because there's about eight of them walking down the hallway right this minute. But in the meantime, we have Lindsay Vafidis here, who is our past teacher at the Quinn School, and Kim Carrero, who is one of our PALS teachers. And again, this is Dr. Thomas and Steph Yarmalovich, the two assistant principals here. And coming in shortly, they'll be here to answer any questions or anything after, and they are part of the voiceovers that you'll be hearing in our presentation. We have Cory Diaz, who is an occupational therapist, Sandy Alpom Raposo, one of our SLPs, Katie Noyes, our school psychologist, Mike Capello, APE, and Steph Mellow, who is one of our PALS teachers, who also put together this presentation that you'll be seeing tonight and unable to be here, who is also part of the voiceovers, Mary Ann Sorensen.
Hi, everyone. So we hope tonight's presentation provides you all with a really nice inside look, highlighting the opportunities of our programs, what they offer to the elementary students throughout the district. Our staff works tirelessly to provide an environment where inclusion and unification are at the forefront of their daily routines. At Quinn, we have 34 classrooms K to 5, and those 34 classrooms, 100% of them, are always willing and able to provide the integration that our students need to be successful. We pride ourselves on creating a place that is shaped around the ideal that equitable doesn't always mean equal, but we do everything we can to promote access to all. So we hope you enjoy.
Welcome to the Quinn School.
Being a part of our Quinn community is important to us. We are always looking for opportunities to communicate in functional and organic ways throughout our day to a variety of familiar and unfamiliar staff. Thus, our snack cart was born. Students sell snacks to staff within the building.
Right, you say.
Hi, I'm Arianna. Aunt Arianna, would you like a snack?
Would you like a snack?
Which snack would you like?
He said that one. Can we look for it? Where is it? Green chips. Thank you. What do you say? What do you say, Ari? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Arianna.
You say hi, but what do we say?
Thank you.
Fans?
Hi, I'm Arianna. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Have a nice day. Thank you.
Our students have access to a variety of low-tech and high-tech tools to promote and enhance their learning throughout the course of each day.
Go find the green circle next Wednesday.
Many of the students in our programs have a variety of sensory needs and therefore have motor breaks built into their day. These breaks are meant to assist with a child's regulation and help them to achieve an optimal level of arousal. Each child's break is unique, individualized, to meet their needs under the guidance of the occupational therapist. So if you see us on the swing or in the hallway riding a scooter board, just know we are getting our bodies ready to work and learn. Meaningful learning is important, and we believe it should encompass more than just traditional academics. Students learn to navigate their Quinn community, participate in seasonal activities such as pumpkin exploration and carving, egg coloring. They follow recipes and have building-based jobs like shredding paper and recycling, to name just a few.
Program students are very much an integral part of the fabric of Quinn. They have so much to offer our community, and they help to make Quinn a better, more inclusive, empathetic, and kind-hearted place where all people are welcomed, accepted, and loved. Relationships are so important. At Quinn, we foster meaningful friendships for our children. The genuine hugs, high fives, and pats on the back come so naturally and are heartfelt.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the community outings, and we are very fortunate that we're able to get out and do a lot of different extracurricular activities. Some of the pictures that you see here are, we went to Hetland Ice Arena for some ice skating. We had Gnome Surf School come down and teach us some dry land training. We've also been involved, and one of the favorite things this year has been Funge Trampoline Park. As you can see the smiles in everyone, this has been probably our biggest hit this year. Other things that we've done, we've gone to Bay State Gymnastics. We've done bowling before. So we really try and do, provide the students with a variety of different experiences. And we really feel like these experiences allow the students to explore some new environments, helping them develop some physical, social, and communication skills, and really building their independence and confidence. So my favorite day of the year is the Day of the Unified Games. We call it the School Day Games. And basically what it is, is we invite neighboring towns and programs to participate with us. And this year, it'll be at Dartmouth High School in a variety of different track and field events and just fun motor activities. And this is just such an awesome day. It provides and promotes inclusion. It just fosters friendships. It certainly promotes a lot of physical fitness and really creates an awareness as we have so many people involved, from volunteers of the high school and the middle school to all of our staff. And I hope that you guys can make it this year, May 17th, at Dartmouth High School.
This year, we are very excited and grateful to have added adapted art and music to the program schedules. This change to the schedule has provided additional opportunities for students to enhance their self-esteem, increase social interactions, improve language skills, and has given an overall greater awareness of the arts. The students and staff look forward to Ms. Robidoux's hands-on projects during adapted art and Dr. Siegel's engaging songs and interactive instruments during adapted music.
Next up, adapted physical education. We provide adaptive physical education services in a small group, sometimes within the regular phys ed class. So there's a lot of different ways that we try and provide these services to our students here at Quinn Elementary School. And basically what it does, it really tries to help individuals with special needs improve their physical fitness, motor skills, coordination, and overall health. It also promotes social interaction, teamwork, and self-confidence. And I think the big part about adapted phys ed is that ensures that everyone has the opportunity to experience the benefits of physical activity and lead a real healthy lifestyle.
Here at the Quinn School, we do our best to ensure every student has a voice and access to what they need to succeed. Assistive technology is a big part of helping students with diverse needs communicate. Learn, show what they know, and engage socially within our school community. At the Quinn School, we are proud to have students who are using a variety of communication devices that help them to communicate, interact socially, and engage with learning in meaningful ways. These communication devices allow our students to be seen and their voices to be heard. Communication devices open doors for our students and break down barriers, helping them to learn language and academic skills, advocate for themselves, make their wants, needs, and thoughts known, and interact socially with peers as equal members of our school community.
Boy needs to clean. Go to actions. Clean.
Clean.
Up. Up. Up.
Up.
He needs to clean up the.
Car.
Good job.
In the words of Rita Pearson, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." These are our Quinn School champions. Last year, Lori DiNizio set the ball in motion at Quinn and opened up opportunities for further collaboration amongst staff to provide richer opportunities for our children. With Kim joining the team and consistently being present within our building, we are confident the students will continue to be supported. Thank you to all of our staff for all that you do for our children. Thank you. So thank you very much. We hope you enjoyed the presentation. The people that I had mentioned before are here, so Sandy Alpom Raposo, Katie Noyes, they were already here. Well, we have Cory and Steph Mellow. So again, we'd be happy to answer any questions or any comments.
Excellent. I'll turn it over to my colleagues to begin. Any questions? Mr. Oliver?
Wow. So first of all, great job putting this together. I know there was not all of you and probably a few other people that are not here that put this together. So I thought it was impeccably done, just the pieces to it. You highlighted a number of different things. There's just so much to unpack out of this video. I think, in my opinion, is that highlighting what is actually going on in some of your classrooms is so important, not only for the school committee, but also for the town in general, to see what today's classrooms, especially in the area that all of you work in. It goes without saying that we have a dedicated bunch of staff at Quinn and across the district. You know, I could say a number of other things, but I don't want to be too winded, but no, congratulations. This was just so important to highlight and see the interactions with our students. And what we're actually doing on a day-to-day basis is huge, so thank you all.
So I agree with everything that Mr. Oliver said. The communication with the computers, how long have you had that? Does every student who needs that or would benefit from that, are they able to access it? Or is there some, you know, do we have funding gaps? I, the physical education, I think, you know, moving your body helps your brain work and helps a person integrate with their class and their friends. But I'm curious about the computers.
So what you see are communication devices, and so there are a variety of types. We have some students, well, most of the students have dedicated devices, and so a lot of times, parents don't realize that they're able to access that through their insurance. So if a student is unable to get their communication needs met verbally, you are able to go through your insurance and get a device funded. You usually do need a speech pathologist to help with that process and to write the evaluation. And I am very proud to say that Dartmouth has really been above and beyond some other districts with helping our parents get those devices. So we have many more students with devices than you would in other districts, but it's because we take that time, that's additional time, that we just seek out to help facilitate families. So if we see that a student isn't able to make their needs known within our district, as speech pathologists in the district, we help the families access that. So because a student doesn't only need that to communicate during school hours, they need that for life. And so we help parents navigate that, and that's something we're really proud of. We've done that for numerous years in the district. We didn't have as many students as we currently do now who required that. And as we know, with COVID and just the way times have been changing and the needs of our students, we've had more students with that. But at Quinn, everyone's a part of that process of embracing students with devices and making it so it's very normalized within our school community.
Terrific. Thank you all for your good work.
Mary?
I was really impressed to see the range of outings that you do with the students. Can you tell me about how many you do over the course of a year?
Hi, Steph Mellow. Mr. Capello is the one that really orchestrates that. He's the voice that you heard. We do lots of events throughout the course of the year. Because the program has grown so much and there are so many students, we typically go, the cycle for each class is about once every month and a half. So just about every Thursday, Mr. Capello is out and about with students in the district. But each class goes about once every month and a half.
Great. Thank you.
So you're welcome.
No, just unbelievable. I'm so impressed and just blown away by what I saw, your dedication to the students, the work, you know, and I'm thinking of, you know, the student that was trying to, you know, clean up type of deal and working to, you know, here's where you got to go, and then, you know, he finds, you know, I'm assuming, clean up your room, or whatever it was, type of deal. And, you know, the satisfaction and the congratulatory that you gave, the positive reinforcement, that's the words I was looking for, that you gave to that student is top-notch. And my hat's off to everybody, not only here, but, you know, throughout the district as to what goes on. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Noons. So some of my favorite people up here. Lifelong friends, for sure, and very respected for the work that you do. I won't get emotional, but it's been about, I don't know, like 12 years, not 11 years, since my son was a student. So I can, the compilation video was wonderfully done. Totally authentic. This is the real deal. And the beauty of it is that it was showcasing a group of students with the highest level of need, which brings its challenges. I don't know how you do it, you know, as a mom, only having one at home, it's a lot. My husband and I, it's a 24/7 thing, constantly redirecting, and it's beautiful as well. You do it every day for that time's, however many students, and so that needs to be commended because it does take a level of skill set. And what you do inspires the trickle-down. So I wrote down, first of all, the innate skill that you all have in building trust within the families that you work with for the safety of their children, and the way in which you facilitate natural connections with peers. It's just part of the fabric of what you do to build empathy and understanding within those students who don't have those high level of needs. And ultimately, of course, the goal is friendship, but it's also safety. And so, speaking personally, you know, there have been situations where I have a child who doesn't speak, and so he can't really tell me everything that happens. And of course, the beauty of the work that you do, your constant communication with families, and it's wonderful. But as my son got older, it was those kiddos that were in his class at Quinn, those peer models, that would ask about him, that would ask their parents to ask me about him or to share something that happened, good or bad, with him through the course of the day. And then last year, I had the real honor of having a conversation with a young lady who was graduating and going into special ed. And I said, oh, my, you know, my son, his needs change over the years. He's out of district. But she said, she turned to her mom and dad, who were there as well, to say, remember that we saw, as if they talked about my family at home, which was beautiful, to say that he inspired her to go into special ed and that she always wondered what happened to him, where he was, and so she was happy to connect. That's what you do. So you do it from three when they come to you. You do it until they move on to the middle school. And that's lifelong effect. The impact that you have is great. And that, the beauty of that video was that it was so playful and loving and so authentic, but there's hard work that goes on in between that, and you love what you do, and it just comes out in every day. So I just want to say that, and I was long-winded, but, and it needed to be said. So thank you, all of you, and those of you who aren't up here right now, and the rest of the folks in the district that are doing this great work. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
Can I ask one more question? Can I put someone on the spot for either for the veterans that are over there or if you're new to the district? Why Dartmouth? Why Dartmouth?
Why Dartmouth? That's a really good question. It's the people. It's the values. It is coming to work in a district that I grew up in and loving what I do and loving the kids and valuing the staff that I work with. It's being part of a team. It's knowing that when I come to work, the support system is here for the kids, for us. It's being a part of something good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great. That was incredible. So next, I'll turn it over for our next presentation. We have Dr. Saban McGuire. I'll have you.
So first, I just want to again thank the Quinn School staff, faculty. I just want to say that I've been to, visited the Quinn School and been in many of your classrooms. And I have to say, when you talk about authenticity, having the opportunity to see you all in action sometimes is really emotional for me when I walk into your classrooms and see the way that you support your students and as Mrs. Amorall said, some of our most high need students. And there you are, there, you always have smiles on your faces. You treat the kids with such love and respect. It's really an amazing school. It's, your classrooms are amazing places to visit. And beyond that, the way that you've integrated your students into the greater school community is obvious. I've seen the cart, the snack cart. I've seen that in action and how much the staff enjoyed, the staff and students. I've seen that in action and how much the staff enjoy, the staff and students enjoy when they get the knock on the door and the snack cart, even though the students can't get the snacks, which is okay. I think that's a good rule. But watching just the way the students also love to see the, your students come to their classrooms, it's really quite, it's inspirational. And I couldn't have said it any better, Mrs. Amorall. So, but it also, this also provides us an amazing segue into our next presentation with Mrs. Denicio, who's going to talk about, again, you've had these students since they were three years old. How do they come to us in the Dartmouth Public Schools? And I think this provides us as a community, an opportunity to learn, how do we identify our students who inevitably, or not inevitably, at sometimes end up in your classrooms? I just, again, can't say enough about the work that you do every day and commend you and have, feel very fortunate to have seen you all in action. So thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Denicio to talk about the beginnings of how we bring these children into our schools.
Before that, I can't stand up here after that and not acknowledge what we just watched, but when we looked at the changing demographics of our school community with over 40% of our students being high-needs, this is what we're talking about. Our students and families are protected by privacy laws, so we can't, we can't talk about a student's educational needs. We can't discuss it. But this video so beautifully illustrated what a budget numbers cannot. The faces and services spotlighted here tonight require increased support, higher staffing levels, which lead to increased budgets, and higher costs for things like specialized transportation. And I think we can all agree, the investment to provide quality education for all of our students is worth it. Our entire school community, certainly myself, our students, our families, and our staff are enriched when we provide high-quality, inclusive educational experiences in our schools. And now I'm going to try to compose myself and do this presentation about preschool. It is, it is. And I think, having been a witness to it for so long and getting to shine a light on it, like I said, a lot of this happens behind closed doors because of privacy. So the fact that these parents allowed you guys to spotlight their children was needed. So thank you for that. But where do we start? So the topic of this is pretty timely because we are just starting the preschool process, getting the preschool process ready for next school year. The lottery has been completed, the application process, and we're starting to fill those peer partner slots for next year. So the logistics of preschool in public schools are a bit confusing. We don't currently have universal preschool, so I'm hoping tonight's presentation can provide some clarity on why we do what we do. So the why behind preschool. If we don't have universal preschool, why do we have any preschool? Because under IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, beginning at age three, students with disabilities become the purview of public schools. Prior to age three, services for students with disabilities are provided through early intervention, which is a program through the state. Mrs. Amorall can tell you all about that. School districts are required to provide developmentally appropriate early childhood special education programs and services for students age three to five. Those words are bolded because the Early Childhood Special Education is actually a department in DESI that guides the work for our earliest learners. This quote comes from the DESI website. "The ECSE programs and services ensure that all children with disabilities have a free and appropriate public education that is designed to meet their unique needs and enable them to make progress in acquiring knowledge and skills, improving social relationships, and learning to take action to meet the needs within the general education program." We measure what matters, and DESI measures the outcomes for students with disabilities. So when a child turns three and is evaluated by us, we fill out these rating scales, which rates these three areas, the knowledge, skills and knowledge, appropriate behavior, and communication. And then when they leave us at age five and enter kindergarten, we rate them again. And that's to ensure the growth and the effectiveness of our early childhood special education programs. So what that means for Dartmouth? When a student turns three and has been evaluated by Dartmouth Public Schools and is identified to have disabilities that impact their ability to participate in a preschool classroom, that student is entitled to a seat in our preschool programs. Historically speaking, approximately 20 seats are needed each school year to provide preschool for students with disabilities turning three. The district has to plan for enough seats to provide services and supports for those students with disabilities. So where do these referrals come from? Often, the students are referred through early intervention. Some referred through pediatricians, private preschools, daycares. Some referrals come through community screenings. And because of our child find law, the district is required to evaluate a child in the area of suspected disability. So far this school year, we have completed 70 evaluations for preschool-age students. Some of these evaluations are for related services only, for example, speech therapy. That's a, it's a big hit in a three to five population. The reality is, we as the public school have the lowest barrier to entry. An evaluation completed through insurance, you might be on a waiting list for six to 12 months. In public school, we have 45 days to complete that evaluation. So when concerns arise with development, people turn to us. So how do we provide these services? And that's through the use of inclusive practices. Guidance from the U.S. Department of Education promotes the use of inclusive practices for early childhood special education. Inclusive practices means that students with disabilities learn alongside typically developing peers. The peers are there to support the learning of students with disabilities. Students with disabilities are the why there is a preschool program, and the peers are part of the how we're providing services for them. Inclusive classrooms have been shown to support the learning of developing social skills, increasing academic achievement, fostering a sense of belonging, and provide age-appropriate models for social and language skills. In other words, a three-year-old is much more likely to learn how to play by watching another three-year-old and playing with another three-year-old than by working with adults. So what this looks like for us, our inclusive education is provided through eight integrated classrooms. Seven of those are at Cushman and one is at Potter. In each classroom, there are seven seats for students with disabilities and eight peer partner seats. So the seven seats with, first spots for students with disabilities are what's considered rolling admission. Because when a student turns three, they're eligible to begin school. So that might happen on October 3rd, so they come to school on October 4th. So at the beginning of the school year, some of those seats are empty, but they fill up as the year progresses. The peer partner slots are filled through the application and lottery process, with priority being given to four-year-olds. And all of those students start the beginning of the school year in September. For next year, we had 42 open peer partner slots, all of which are filled primarily with four-year-olds, but we were able to provide services for some three-year-olds as well. And there are 21 open special education slots. So hopefully that will be enough. And if it's not, then we open another classroom, because that's our, that's our job. And then, I don't have fancy videos, because I don't have that kind of technical skill, but I do have pictures. And really, just to point out the fact of, this is what inclusion looks like. It looks like kids playing. The kids at the table, some of them might be non-speaking, some of them might be your typically developing four-year-old. You can't tell when everyone's playing. I love the picture of the kids at the fire with the firefighters, because no one's paying attention. And that's perfectly developmentally appropriate. We have students getting more support from staff than other kids need, but again, we're all working together to meet the expectations of preschool. And this is sort of where that middle picture, this is where our unified sports begins. Again, the Mike Capello touch at Cushman, that's where he starts his unified sports. So he starts them young. So that's all I have for tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
Bass and then Mr. Oliver. Well, okay, Bass, and then we'll go to Ms. Nunes.
Great presentation, even without the video. So I'm curious about the peer partners and the ratio. So is that a mandated ratio? Is there, it is?
That ratio is set by DESI. It's seven to eight. There are other ratios, like you can have a class of 20 and have 15 peers and five students with disabilities, but we stick to the seven to eight model here, and that's it. You can't have less than that or more than that. That is the number of students.
Okay. And that works well, because to have pre-K in Dartmouth, it's a real boon for parents because it really doesn't cost very much. But do the parents of the peer partners fully understand what the ratio of the classroom that they're entering?
I'm not sure. I think that's why I'm here tonight, Mrs. Copeland.
I think that that's a really good thing to dwell on, that when parents apply, that their children would be peer partners. Is that ever discussed?
Yeah, it's certainly part of our preschool presentation. Again, it's hard for us because we swim in this water. So this is what we live. And I think parents, we might say it, but understanding it is something different, right? So what that actually looks like in the classroom might not be what a parent is envisioning. We've certainly said it, they know it when they sign up. But again, I think the reality of that is misunderstood sometimes.
And the peers themselves, they probably, this is the water they swim in.
This is the water they swim in.
They think this is the way the world should be, and this is the way the world should be.
Right. They know some of their friends need more help, and they're very willing to help them.
Right. I think it's more people of an older generation who don't swim in that water, who see it differently.
Right, yes.
Okay. Really wonderful, wonderful, wonderful work. And the patience and dedication to do it right is outstanding.
Yeah.
Let's make myself a note for later, I'm sorry.
I understand.
Something I'm going to talk about later, but I just wanted to make a note, so I don't forget. One of the, I think the slide just before this one here, it's almost, yeah, okay, the far right, what are we doing here with these students? You know, it almost looks like they're trying to throw, you know, balls or...
The one with the net?
The one with, oh, is that a net? Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, I believe it's a butterfly. You know, when they make the pupa and they make the butterflies and they let them go.
Oh, okay.
I think it's that, yeah. Some science. Leading some science standards.
There we go. No, that's fine. No, I, you know, it was, you know, they, seriously, they're enjoying themselves and such, and I wasn't...
And no one's really looking, and everyone's half-sitting. I mean, this is preschool, it's beautiful.
Oh, it's great. It's wonderful. But in all seriousness, you know, thank you for, thank you for this, and, you know, that was my stomping grounds. Cushman was for sixth grade and that, so I, you know, a little bit of a love for that building. But, you know, just as, again, taking care of students, and that's what we do. And it's, you know, what we have to do. You know, I mean, unfortunately, the state, you know, doesn't give us a lot of money to do it, but they make us do it, and, you know, one of those...
And it is our pleasure.
Unfunded, unfunded, and it's thankful that, you know, it's, you know, we have the staff and personnel that, that's their love, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Oliver?
So first of all, Mrs. Denicio, thank you, great presentation. I know it's a tough act to follow.
They're my people, too. You can't begrudge them.
Can certainly, can certainly appreciate that. But it's just so important to highlight the fact that we all know, as, most of us as educators know, that the sooner that we can get to these students that have learning disabilities, that have other types of disabilities, the better the outcome is going to be, right? So for us to have seven classrooms across the district of pre-K speaks volumes. I know that we're always looking to expand. I would love to see universal pre-K at some point. I know the budget certainly is not looking favorable right now in the coming years, but I just love to see, you know, the explanation, not just so much for the school committee, but I would love to see these kinds of highlights as we move forward throughout this school year, to showcase everything that this school district does for the students of Dartmouth. I think it's so important. And not only is it important for our special education students, but I think it also helps to grow. I can, I'm speaking from experience. My two daughters were, you know, they went through the Cushman preschool, actually, I think it was Quinn, then Cushman preschool program at the time. And I truly believe that they certainly are better people because of that. So I think this program speaks volumes to what we can do with early interventions and at the preschool level. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, you actually embed answers to what I was going to ask you about in terms of the rolling enrollment, because obviously, students hit that transition if they're in early intervention, or if a provider, you know, refers the student for that age three, if it's so evaluated and decided upon as a need. So you answered that. You spoke to anticipating the numbers for the year for that rolling.
Sometimes with fingers crossed, yeah.
Right, I'm sure. Yeah, I'm sure. And that's just an important point. But my colleagues kind of spoke to the rest. I mean, I said, what I said before goes, you know, and having the importance of this presentation and showcasing this and going into detail as to the why and the how, really, and with your clear, you know, love for what you do and for the people that you work with, the heart and soul, you know, it's all about the heart and soul of doing what's right, you know, aiming for those, that progress and those good outcomes. It starts at, starts at the preschool. Yeah, so I don't really have anything else to add, but thank you so much. This was so important. This is hard work, rewarding work, important work, necessary work, mandated work. And you all make it look so effortless and beautiful. It's pre-K, it's messy, it's dirty, it's noisy, it's lovely, it's wonderful. But it costs money. And that's the bottom line, is that these are kiddos who deserve this, who are entitled to this. And it costs a lot of money.
Yeah, and anyone can do the math around the peer partner tuition and realize that that is not funding our preschool program, right? So I think that that was, you know, something I had heard recently, and I thought, oh, I'm not good at math, but I know that that's not true. And you're right, it is an investment, it is an investment in their outcomes and our outcomes as a school district, because like, I forgot who said it, but it's really that early intervention that's going to pave the way for future success, so.
And those kiddos, those peer partners are swimming in the water with their, with their peers who need extra help. And, and it's just setting the stage for a better society, a more integrated and more empathetic, more understanding, aware society. And so it's, it's just, not only do we have to do it, of course, we're going to do it because it's what should be done. So, thank you.
Can I just, just add, because Mr. Oliver mentioned that we don't have universal pre-K, and certainly we know that's true. We do know there's a lot of attention on pre, on universal pre-K at the federal level, and that is trickling down to the state level. I just read a memo right before I came here from the, from DESI, just announcing some additional, some communities that had been awarded what they're calling a CPPI grant, which is a community partnership grant, and that's meant to expand opportunities for access to pre-K in collaboration and partnership with local childcare providers. And so that's something that I hope as we start, as we continue to develop our strategic plan, that we can be considering ways that we can examine whether or not that type of funding opportunity might help us to expand pre-K here in Dartmouth, because we certainly know the importance of early childhood education.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Now's the time.
The time has come.
Reorganization of the committee is, or organization of the committee is next. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Saban McGuire. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Saban McGuire.
And, well, yep. Okay, I'm going to jump right in. So at this time, we will seek a nomination for the chairperson of the Dartmouth School Committee.
Madam Superintendent, I make a motion that we nominate Chris Oliver as chairman of the Dartmouth School Committee for the next school year.
And I second that.
Any other nominations? Any discussion?
Close nominations.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I think I say the motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you. I don't know how, I don't know how I feel right now.
I know how I feel.
No, just stay there for tonight and just move the, we've done that before. Just move the name tags.
Make it official, I guess.
And I would formally like to welcome Mary Beckwith to the school committee.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We are delighted to have you, and I don't know.
If you can't take it out, you can keep it, and you can stay chair.
She actually did get it out, Mr. Oliver.
Do that again. Yep, do the bottom one again.
All right.
Because I can't get my name out.
I can't, I can't get my name out.
All right. I don't know if either of you are qualified to be chair.
She said it, Chris.
There we go. Oh, wait, I'm not this yet. I'm not, I'm not this.
Oh, no.
I'll give that to you for now. Don't know who that is.
So I guess, first of all, thank you for your support for nominating me as chair. I will certainly do my best through this upcoming challenging year that I know it is going to be. I do want to take this opportunity, like Ms. Amaral said, to welcome Ms. Beckwith. If you could, if you want to say a few words and just introduce yourself. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I am putting you on the spot.
You are. So I just finished this campaign where I had to speak all the time, and so I didn't expect to have to do that tonight. But my name is Mary Beckwith. I, I've lived in Dartmouth for about 20 years. I work at UMass Dartmouth. I'm a Title IX investigator and compliance coordinator. When Kate called me today, I was just about to start a hearing for an incident that occurred between two students. So I was like, Kate, I have to get off the phone. But anyway, that's what I do during the daytime. I live here in Dartmouth with my wife Jill and my son Isaiah, who is a senior here at Dartmouth High, will be graduating, hopefully, in just about a month. And I am delighted to be here and look forward to doing this work for the town of Dartmouth.
Thank you.
Excellent.
How's that for off the cuff?
I love it. I love it. Perfect. I guess at this time, I will entertain a motion, or nominations for a vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion we nominate Elizabeth Coughlin as vice chair.
Second.
On the motion, any discussion?
Does she accept?
Will you accept?
I will.
I thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'll take the regular old committee member.
Yay.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Get your graduation speeches ready.
Hold on, not yet.
It'll be here before you know it.
It'll be here before you know it. He gets the high school, you get middle school.
Oh, I didn't know.
There you go.
Exciting.
So I guess at this time, I will call for the election of a secretary. Typically, the secretary to the school committee is the superintendent of schools.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we appoint Dr. June Saban McGuire as secretary to the school committee.
Second.
Motion.
So I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Amaral on the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I don't really think I had a choice.
I don't think you had a choice either, Dr. Saban McGuire. Nonetheless, we thank you for serving as secretary. All right. Next up, we have the assignments for subcommittees and other committees that the school committee members serve on. So first off, in no particular order, just what I'm reading off of my brief here, is the Dartmouth Education Foundation. I'm not sure who was, I don't have that up in front of me yet, who served on it. Let's see.
I served on it, but they never got in contact with me, and I have not done anything with them.
Okay. So what are our thoughts? Do we want to continue on with this partnership, or elect or appoint someone else? Or at least, why don't we have you, unless someone else wants to?
Can I just say, I know that, at least for me, I've met with them only once this year, and we actually have a meeting tomorrow at 5:15. So perhaps it was just, I'm guessing, an oversight on their part, because I think there's been some change in the leadership of that board.
Probably, okay.
And maybe they just didn't know that you were supposed to be invited.
Why don't we continue?
So I'll see you tomorrow, 5:15.
Where's that?
It's right here. In the library, yes.
Okay. Anyone else, any opposition, or anyone else that would like to be appointed to DEF? Well, thank you for serving. Next up is the Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative. I currently serve on that committee. I'm currently serving as chair of the executive board for SMEC. I'm happy, this is, I think, now my, probably my eighth year doing so. I'm happy to stay on that board unless someone else would like to step in.
No, I'm the treasurer, so I'm out.
Okay. So I will continue serving. Next up, we have our representative to MAS-C. Now, I'm just thinking about this, because I was just looking through the monthly newsletter we get from MAS-C. Now, typically, at their annual meeting in November, they have a meeting of the delegates. Is it safe to say, Mr. Nunes, that the person that represents us, that we appoint to this committee, would also serve as our delegate? Should we, should we take up some of their, their language and send someone?
I would, I would think it would. I will be honest with you. I did not get to the meeting down at Cape last year. I was in Indianapolis with the band. But, you know, I would assume that that's what it can be, or, you know, maybe we can find out exactly if that's the way that would work. I would have no problem with that.
You know, one of the things I would like to see this committee do moving forward, after being involved with MAS-C for so long and the need for advocating, is take up some resolutions and bring them, have our delegate bring them to the fall convention.
Yep.
So currently, we have...
Me.
Who is on that?
Me.
Thank you.
No, seriously.
Are you, are you happy to stay on that committee? Is anyone else?
Yeah, I'm fine. Nope, I'm good with that. If the committee, if that's the committee's wish, I'm fine.
Perfect. So we'll keep Mr. Nunes on that. Moving forward, I have the list up. I'll just go right down the list now. Our negotiating representative to the DEA for collective bargaining currently, and we have John Nunes, Kathleen Amaral, and Shannon Jenkins as backup. Obviously, our backup is no longer with us. Dr. Jenkins, what is your pleasure, Mr. Nunes and Ms. Amaral? And does...
On time with doing that.
As the backup?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Now, just, just a quick question, because I know how collective bargaining can be, you know, it can be certainly time-consuming. Is there any interest in separating out any of the bargaining units? Or is it important to have the same person around across all collective bargaining units?
I personally, I'm, again, you know, depending on everybody's, you know, I mean, no, you guys are working. So, you know, if they're meeting at 3:00 in the afternoon, it becomes very difficult for you guys to get there. You know, 99 times out of 100, I'm retired, so I can, you know, if I know far enough in advance, I can always rearrange my schedule.
Okay.
And I've been fine with that. It hasn't bothered me. I don't know, again, Mr., you know, Dr. McGuire wasn't there, but Mr. Kylie was there, as was Mr. Tebow. They can chime in if, but I'm good with it.
Yeah, I just know that it can be certainly a burden on...
Yeah. I'm good.
Our members. So, okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. The technology committee, I am on that. I don't believe we've met recently. I know Mr. Galishaw has certainly been busy, since my, my background is technology. I'm certainly happy to stay on that, although I'm also happy to give it up. So if anyone wants to...
You have the computer.
...that rule, otherwise, I'm happy to stay on. All right, where are we at, Dr. Saban McGuire or Mr. Kylie, with the representatives for the town charter committee?
I could answer that.
Perfect.
I happen to be the representative.
So I knew, I knew there was someone.
For the town charter committee.
Okay.
And it is time-consuming, but we see the light at the end of the tunnel. And therefore, I would like to...
Continue.
Continue, because we're almost done.
Yeah.
Perfect. And is Ms. Brooks still on the committee as well? Is our representative, is she?
I think she is our representative. She's still, she's the chair.
Okay. I know she's a select board member now, but is she still looking at it through our lens, through the lens of?
I thought so.
I have no doubt she is. I'm not questioning that. I'm just, just bringing it up. So I'm happy with that. We'll leave that one alone.
We're really almost done.
Okay. Fair enough. Where are we at, Dr. Saban McGuire, with the DEI committee? Because it says no appointment made. Where...
We don't actually have a DEI committee. We are doing DEIB work, and the focus this past year has really been with the, with the district leadership team. And the plan is to continue that work more at the school level moving forward. But as far as committee, that includes a school committee person, we don't currently have that committee in place.
I know that, I think it was prior to your arrival, there was quite a bit of back and forth. I know Dr. Jenkins had, was part of the discussions as well. I don't know if anyone else can refresh my memory, because it's a little foggy right now...
It is as well.
...as to what this, how this committee left it. Because it clearly, it's here for a reason.
Yeah.
Because we, at one point, maybe we were looking to have a representative.
I'm thinking... Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think Dr. Jenkins had said that they were rearranging, and it might not come back into existence. And she wanted to wait and see how that all played out.
Yeah. I just want to show you, this is work that is happening in the district.
Oh, I have no doubt. I have no doubt.
And this past year, our, our focus has really been on building capacity amongst our leadership team. And when I say that, I'm talking about all of our principals, our assistant principals, directors. And so that's been the focus of every one of our DLT meetings this past, not even meetings PD this past year, with the idea that this, over the summer, we'll be looking at how we're going to roll that out into the schools, so that our staff and faculty can participate in professional learning. And that will be an area of focus for the school district, as far as professional development next, this 2024-25 school year.
Okay. So unless someone, you know, has any other suggestions or thoughts, we'll just leave it as is?
Yeah, I would leave it as, I just, with Beth sharing that, and I think it was also, I hate to even bring this up, but it was around, it was like offshoots, and we were talking about indigenous curriculum and culture, and then we didn't really have, early on, we didn't have two, a secondary and a primary level curriculum directors at the time. And so now it's sort of woven into the fabric of what you're doing, as you're sharing and as we're seeing. So I think that's why it was not necessarily coming back and the usefulness of us to lead that, where we have a leader who's leading that in, in the work that's being done every day. I don't know, that's my thought.
No, I'm completely, as chair, I'm completely fine.
You know, and I just want to, sorry, we can update you as to what we've done this year. And once we have our, a clear plan in place, we'll come to the committee and present the direction that we're headed in for next year.
Great.
All right? Does that work?
That sounds good.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Committee representatives, Town Open Space and Recreation Plan Steering Committee. Is this still a valid committee?
I know we had a number of meetings early last year and such, and, you know, they put a huge packet together. I haven't heard any more on it since they kind of had that final meeting, probably sometime maybe it was even this time last year. I don't know. I have to go back and think, I'll look at my minutes in my notes. But, you know, it's there. I haven't heard any more on it.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can hang with it. I'm good.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. And curriculum council, I believe this was fairly new last year, or recently, that we had a, a school committee wrap on it. I do think it's important that we do have someone. I know this isn't, the school committee does not have any say over curriculum, but I think from a budgetary standpoint and just a stakeholder standpoint, I do think it's worthwhile to have a committee member on the curriculum council for the simple reason that where they're able to bring back, if they hear concerns in the community or whatnot, they are able to be that voice that speaks to some of the stakeholders in the community. Any thoughts on who would like to take Dr. Jenkins' place?
I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And going back up to the top, since I sided off in the middle there, a policy committee, which is made up of our assistant superintendent, the assignment has been Beth Coughlin and Kathleen Amaral. How often did we meet last year?
But again, if there's no...
No, so here are my, here are my thoughts, and I'm just going to speak, just give you what I think. I think that MAS-C is always coming out with new, as you probably see in your newsletters, different language, and there's always language to be updated. I would personally, I think it's important that this committee does its due diligence, because that is one of the specific areas that we're responsible for, policy and budget, that we make a commitment to at least meeting every other month or quarterly during the school year to, because I know that, I have no doubt that there's policies that need to be updated with policy language changes. And just the general stuff that'll be coming up, not so much policies, but first reads of other documents that need to be brought to the full committee. So I would just like to see, you know, some kind of more, some, and I'm going to bring this up for the budget committee as well, some kind of standing meeting that we have. And it doesn't, doesn't have to be monthly, but I think it should be at least quarterly. Thoughts on everyone else?
I'm grateful.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I think that our policy should be updated on a regular basis. Absolutely.
So with that, Beth and Kathleen are currently on it. Are you, would you like, what's your pleasure?
I'm happy to be on it. I probably enjoy being on it, oddly. But I'd also have an interest in the budget committee. So I don't know what other people are interested in there in balancing things out.
Is that something you might be interested in?
Yeah. I would definitely be interested in policy.
Does anyone have any?
And I'm happy to stay on that as well.
You might? So it'll... Is that something you might be interested in?
I would definitely be interested in policy.
Does anyone have any?
And I'm happy to stay on that as well.
You might? So it'll be.
Yeah.
Be Mary and Kathleen?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Thank you both. Fields and Facilities Committee, currently we have John Nunes and Kathleen Amaral. Thoughts on that? Is that, have you been meeting?
We have, we did, we did meet several times in the fall. I know that. So.
Particularly regarding the long-term capital planning efforts.
Capital plan efforts and everything, so.
I, I don't know, you know, how that's going to evolve and how fast that long-term capital plan is going to, you know, begin to take shape. But certainly that subcommittee can be an important, play an important role in that process.
I, I think it's important to keep this school district moving with a lens at the big picture of school buildings. I think it's important that we, you continue to do this work for sure.
Mm-hmm.
So John and Kathleen.
Yeah.
You okay with staying on it?
I'm happy to stay. I'm happy to give it up if somebody hasn't interested.
Oh, I'm good. Again, I'm good with it if somebody else.
Perfect.
You know, this is not.
All right.
Ego-driven.
Thank you both. Budget Committee, so it was Dr. Jenkins and myself, and then John as a backup. I am certainly happy to stay in this committee as well. Anyone else I know?
So I, I do have an interest, but I don't know if John would like to move from backup and have me as backup. But I do have an interest in that committee.
Oh, go ahead, and I'll stay as backup if necessary. That's fine. I'm good.
Thank you.
Perfect. Well, thank you. And once again, like I said, with the Policy Committee, I think especially this ongoing school year is going to be certainly very important. And, and I would like to see Mr. Kylie, we can meet later on, but some kind of standing meetings in which we get updates on the, the different aspects of the budget. Because I think with, with some of the concern around some of the Finance Committee members, that it would be prudent to try to nab some of these questions and concerns before, before they, it's speculated and there, there's other, other comments that come up. And last but not least, school assignments. We had decided last year, no school assignments will be given, and that all members should do their best to keep in touch with all the schools. Are we okay with continuing to do that?
I, I mean, I would, I just wonder, and, and I haven't done my best with this. I certainly keep myself engaged, but not to the point of like calling, Dr. Thomas, can I, or, you know, Mr. Graham, can I come in to see, you know, to meet with you? I would love to know what the administrators feel about this personally. I don't know. I mean, if we, if it's something that we don't decide on today, or we keep as is, but perhaps learn that they would have enjoyed us being assigned to a particular school.
Yeah, Mr., you know, discussions I've had, you know, and that their comment to me has always been, you're always welcome. Well, I for one always make it a point to, you know, pick up the phone or send an email and say, hey, I'd like to stop in. You know, what's a good time? Because sometimes, you know, they're out at admin at, at meetings, or, you know, they've got certain things going on in the school. So, you know, I don't make it a point to drop in unannounced once in a blue moon, but that's very rarely. But the ones that I've always talked to, you know, my comment to them has been, you need me, call me. You know, and that type of deal. And, you know, they'll call and I'll pop by and that. But again, however we want to go about it, it's fine with me, you know?
I'm happy to talk to June about setting something up in which we can get some, maybe, maybe it's easy enough to put out an email and just get some feedback from the admin team.
We can do that. We're actually seeing all of our administrators at some point this week, so we can check in with them.
Okay.
Beautiful.
Great, thank you very much. Am I missing anything?
No.
I think I've covered it all.
I got everything checked off.
Yeah. All right. Before we get to anything else, I do want to take, I have a few things that I'd like to say. First of all, I'd like to thank outgoing chairperson Kathleen Amaral for your, for your work and your dedication and time. Thank you very much over the past year. I always, I always learn so much from you, Kathleen. And I know sometimes you, you're always, you're very hard on yourself sometimes, and not necessarily. But I certainly always learn something from you and your, your calm demeanor, and always your thoughtfulness, and especially around special education. So thank you. Thank you for, for serving in your role. So one of the things that the new chair does sometimes is just kind of some thoughts for the upcoming year. And I do have a little something I would like to share with everyone. And it's around the, the times that we're having right now around the budget. Around budget uncertainty, around possible reductions in staff through, whether it's through attrition or anything else, as well as using one-time's funds to solve the budget. And while I didn't have an opportunity to attend the entire Finance Committee meeting last Thursday, I believe it was. I know I walked in late, and Mr. Nunes and Ms. Beth was there. And they said, you really need to watch the beginning of it. So I, I did take the opportunity to, to watch the beginning of the Finance Committee. And it's certainly, certainly a little concerning, some, some of the pieces that, that came out of the chair's mouth. And I do have a little, just a little something to share with everyone. And I would like to, first of all, go on the record to thank Ms. Terry Hamm for, she, Finance Committee Member, past chair, I believe, who's always been very supportive of the School Department and is always at our meetings. You can typically find her sitting there in the audience. So thank you, Terry, for always coming to our meetings and listening to what we have to say. But I'm deeply troubled with some of the rhetoric coming from members, a few of the members of the Finance Committee. While I understand it is certainly their role and their responsibility to question department budgets. At last Thursday night's Finance Committee meeting on the fourth, some members had gone on the record stating a number of concerns they had with the School Committee. Most concerning, in my opinion, was the statement that the school budget had wiggle room in it. It implied the school district could continue with the status quo without a general operating override. And that what I had said previously, that this town is going to need to make a decision on the types of schools they want for their children, was, was simply political and hyperbole. That, that is certainly not the case. We could continue everything, some of the other things, we could continue everything we offer currently with the status quo financially because of that wiggle room. Make no mistake about it, there is no wiggle room in this budget in this School Department. That is simply wrong. When the Dartmouth Public Schools budget ranks close to the bottom of 322 school districts across the state, at number 270 for the FY '23 school year, there is no wiggle room. I'm extremely proud at the amount of budget transparency our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Mr. Kylie provides to the Finance Committee, to the School Committee, and to any department in town, as far as I'm concerned, that asks for that. Since I have been on this committee, I've made it my goal to push the School Department to be as transparent as possible. I know for a fact there are other school districts that do not give the amount of data that is very time-consuming but worthwhile to other departments. Switching gears, we are tapping school choice funds to solve this year's budget deficit. But yet, the Chair of the Finance Committee stated at a joint meeting that it was their recommendation to get rid of school choice. A decision in which they were not educated enough to make. This leaves me confused and wanting more answers from some of their lines of thinking. The only way forward in my eyes is to have open, honest dialogue with all stakeholders in this town. It is my recommendation that we do a few things. The first of which, we schedule standing budget subcommittee meetings. We invite Finance Committee members to attend, in addition to, if there's any appetite. We can certainly, what we certainly welcome town officials, the Finance Director, Mr. McGinnis, if you'd like to be part of this. Because I see a pattern here, that there, there were a few things that were, that were correct, in my opinion. Where our budget will be at $60 million before you know it. I'm going to look to this staff in central office and this committee to really make sure that we're leaving no stone unturned. And I think we're, we're seeing the efforts of that right now, based on some of what's happening with reductions in positions. And I thank them for that. In addition, I would like to, and I'm going to look to you at some point. We'll put it on the, one of the next agendas. But I would love to see, something that, that I found very helpful was last year, the year before, New Bedford Vocational had an, an open door session in which they invited all of their, all of the elected and appointed officials from New Bedford, Fairhaven, and Dartmouth to attend, two years ago. And they had Mr.
Watson.
Thank you. Mr. Watson, Mr. Commentator himself of all the meetings, held a brief, opening welcome meeting, and then he went on, and there was a full tour of the school and all the facilities that it had to offer. I would like to see the School Department extend that same invitation to elected and appointed officials in this town, as well as, we can talk more on this, but I'd like to see some, some more conversations around who we want to extend an invitation to. But exactly what we saw tonight by the, the Quinn School, by, by the staff at the Quinn School, is why we, I think it's important for everyone to see what actually goes on within these four walls across all of our districts. This is not your parent's school district. Some of the people, even myself, it, you know, times have changed. And what we're doing today in the Dartmouth Public Schools is not what we were doing 20 and 30 years ago, for sure. The amount of responsibilities put on a school district and mandates. We, and that's why I asked that question, why Dartmouth? We have something special here. I think we can all agree on that. That's why we all serve on this, this board. That's why Dr. Seaman McGuire decided to come to Dartmouth. She had opportunities to go elsewhere, I'm sure of it, but she decided Dartmouth. There is something special about this town, for the people that live here, for the people that grew up here, were educated here, and now work here. There is something special for all of us. So I would just like to see a better working relationship across the town. And this starts with me extending an invitation to Finance Committee members to attend any of our meetings, our subcommittee, Budget Subcommittee Meetings. And please, when we have it, I'd love to see a full house here when we, when we welcome our elected and appointed officials for tours of our buildings. So I thank you for entertaining me, but I think it was important to say.
Very well said.
Yeah. Excellent.
Next up, old business, FY '25 budget vote discussion. I will turn it over to Dr. Seaman McGuire.
So we've been having this discussion since December. So I think that, I'm hoping that we're at a place now where, you know, somewhat reluctantly, but certainly we know that the committee needs to make a decision about the budget. You know, Mr. Kylie had, I can't thank him enough. You already talked about how transparent he is. I can't tell you how much he's taught me this past year about understanding a budget. I feel so much more knowledgeable because he's taken the time to explain every detail. And there's still some that, that I think I have left to learn. But I'm really grateful for the work that he's done. And I can't imagine working alongside anyone, anywhere, who takes the time and spends the due, the due diligence to make sure that every single thing that he puts before you is, I'm just going to say it, even though it's right on the money. And so I've seen him change things in the moment, and I've seen him change things since, again, the first budget presentation in December. So, you know, just kudos to the work that he does, and Dartmouth is really fortunate to have him in this position. So, Mr. Kylie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Seaman McGuire. I appreciate the kind words. And, yeah, it's been a little bit of a different budget process this year than normal. Obviously, we, you know, we had some, we had some struggles in last year's budget process, the FY '24 process. But really, nothing like the changing dynamic of this year. So what we are asking you to consider tonight is a vote on the FY '25 budget. I always feel bad for Mrs. Beckwith, like, a brand-new School Committee Member who, okay, you're thrown right into it. Now you've got to vote to approve, you know, fifty, $53 million. It's no pressure there. But there's a series of motions that I provided you, memorandum of. We have one conflict of interest, so we have a, a way that we need to go about these motions. So I would certainly, before we do all this, be happy to entertain any questions you might have about the budget. We've had a lot of discussion about it, but there's, there's, you know, always room for, for more thought on it. So I'd be happy to entertain that before we move forward.
Questions, Mr. Nunes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, do you want my rant about Thursday's FinCon meeting now, or would you like to wait till later?
I will.
Choice is yours. You're the chair. I have no qualms either way.
Well, since we are on budget discussion.
If we can vote the budget, and then I can do it, that's fine, too.
We're on budget discussion, so.
That's fine. Thank you. I agree with you, and I had it on my notes. Terry, thank you very much for all your help. At least there's one stable, stable vote on that committee type of deal. I think the only thing that came out of Thursday's meeting, in my opinion, that I agree with anyone on, and I agree with Mr. Garvin on this, was the amount of state aid that we're getting. And the fact, you know, we've all talked about getting Representative Mackey and Senator Montigny on board, and seeing what they can do and everything else. And, you know, his comment about having breakfast with Senator Mackey and not getting anywhere in Senator, Representative Mackey, I should say. And he said, yeah, I have an override. You know, gee, thanks. You know, you're going to help us at all or not? When, like I've said before, when you sit here and you look at, you know, not the gateway cities, though that's a house of a different color. I'm not even going there, type of deal. But when you look at communities around us or anywhere, and they have less students than we have, and they get oodles of more money, it gets a little disheartening just because of the way the state formula is set, you know? Yes, we can't raise taxes, and, you know, 5921 takes care of that from, you know, nineteen, nineteen eighty-nine or nineteen seventy-nine with Proposition Two and a Half. So it's as simple as that. School choice. Well, I'll tell you what, and I've said it before, and if we didn't have school. have school choice, we would really be sitting here singing an entirely different tune, because we wouldn't have $2 million, okay? Yes, we banked it, okay, because we had the free money. Well, I don't know about anybody else, but in my accounting world, in government finance world, if I have free money, I'm going to use it for us, before I have to start tipping into my own money. If somebody gives me $5 million, type of deal, I'm going to use that for us, before I have to use mine, because there's going to come a point in time that the free money dries up, which we know it does, so I'm going to use that type of deal. The ESER positions, we said from day one, when we put those positions on, that we knew we were walking over that cliff, okay? Come September 30th, and we've talked about it, to have a member of the finance committee sit there who watches our meetings and says, well, why did you put people on with those positions? Doesn't make sense to me, what planet do you want? We've talked about that for three years now, you know, so it is what it is. The changes in the budget, you know, well, how come it went from three to six to three to two, what's, you know, I think Mr. Kylie has talked about that in nauseam, okay, as to how, what we came up with, when he went and had a discussion with the town folk, you know, the town administrator, finance director, members of the Board of Selectment, and they sat there and they said, put all the positions back in, and we'll see where it's at. That's where the budget went from three to six, you know? We're following kind of marching orders that they're giving us, so that's as simple as that. Pay for transportation, well, yeah, we tried that a number of years ago, and there's a couple, there's one member of the committee that was there at the time, I'm not sure if, I don't think Mr. Bowles was on the, the committee at that time, he had already gotten off, but we tried paying for transportation, okay? Remember, we got to transport K to seven, so what do you do when you have, you know, a child in sixth grade and a child in eighth grade in one household? You can transport one and not the other, or seventh grade and high school, you know, I, you know, come on, it doesn't work, and, you know, the paying and trying to account and tickets out and everything else, it was an absolute disaster and a nightmare, so that just doesn't work. I think Dr. Seaman McGuire said it perfectly, when she talked about the reduction in force, and she just got up there and she just said, remember one thing, it's people. Those are people that we are talking about, we're talking about people's lives, and, you know, their livelihood and everything else, so, you know, things of that nature. And lastly, I think we need to send the slides that we had tonight, from the two, from the Quinn School and what Mrs. Denicio did, uh, I think those have to go to the finance committee.
I agree.
Because that gives them an idea, because one of the wonderful slides that we had at our previous meeting, that says selected student populations, you know, with low income, disabilities, and high needs, and it spelled it out, type of deal, and again, this was a fantastic present, presentation that, you know, our administration gave the, uh, the finance committee, but that really highlights, that drives the nail home, type of deal.
Agreed.
So, I mean, I think, you know, you know, Mr. Garvin made the comment about, you know, their, you know, I've made comments about them, you know, the way they're looking at the budget and everything else, you know? One of the wonderful things sometimes I've said to people, I haven't said it at a meeting, but I'll say it tonight, you know, we could sit up here as a committee and be smart, and we're going to vote $53 million, and as I say to people, we could put it all, we could vote to put it all into maintenance, or some other different line item, and our students and faculty show up, you know, September 1st for school, with beautifully clean, modern buildings type of deal, but no supplies, no personnel, no textbooks, nothing of that nature, that's what we do. Our responsibility is this budget. That's our first and foremost responsibility, is the budget and the education of our students in this town, and that's what we're charged with, and that's what I've always taken to high, in all my years here, so. Madam Superintendent, I apologize for the rant, I did warn you, but.
You did.
I'm actually very, very impressed, uh, Mr. Nunes, that was, that was not bad at all.
It's amazing what you can write at 3:00 in the morning.
No, I, I certainly agree, I echo some of your sentiments. Any other thoughts?
I really feel that Mr. Kylie has gone through every line and looked every, under every rock.
Do you see any wiggle room?
I don't. I don't. Not unless we want to be the bottom of spending in every category, um, and that will catch up to us eventually. So, I endorse this budget, um, I wish we had more to spend, and I hope that we can come together and solve it next year.
Agree.
I mean, I don't have anything else to add, you, you have all spoken so eloquently, really looking forward to your ideas of, of just working, better working relationships to see how that translates to understanding what we do, more, um, representation of what we do, as was seen earlier today. Yeah, no wiggle room. So silly.
You can't find $13,000? Come on, people, sorry.
Do you have any thoughts, or I know, you're brand new, Mrs. Beckwith.
I do want to say, I attended a few meetings earlier in the winter and have been following along, and am very appreciative of the amount of detail, uh, that the administration has provided us in terms of the budget, and the different, um, the different presentations of amounts that they have given us, so I do feel prepared to vote.
So, yeah, I will just close with, um, thank you, everyone, for a long, arduous budget process for the FY25 budget. I have no doubt that as soon as this is approved, that we'll be looking to FY26, um, and we'll go from there, but I'm not going to belabor the point any longer. So, uh, let me just bring up my motion sheet here. And whenever anyone's ready.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the FY25 budget appropriation for part of school classroom teachers in the amount of $2,013,111.
Second. So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Coughlin, on the motion, any other discussion? All in favor, is this a roll call?
No.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I will abstain, motion passes, four to zero with one abstention.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the FY25 budget appropriation for the total budget excluding the item voted individually in a previous motion, in the amount of $51,143,727.54.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Mrs. Amorall, on the motion, any other discussion? Chair, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you, everyone, thank you, thank you, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Jim, thank you, June, good job.
All right, next up, new business, superintendent's update, Dr. Seaman McGuire.
Great, we get to talk about some fun things, like the eclipse. I mean, it really was a, an amazing event, certainly worldwide, and I do want to say that I'm glad it's over, because there, there was some angst that went along with just people concerned that students in some way, you know, could perhaps look at the sun too long, and I have to say that that didn't happen. Um, we did happen to be out at the Potter School this afternoon, and we got to see the students with the glasses, and the teachers were doing such a great job teaching them how to use those glasses, and to go to kindergarten and first graders, so if kindergarten and first graders can do this, I have complete confidence that the rest of us would be able to get through it, um, and we did, and so it was fun, we got to look out the window, I even had Kate try on some glasses, and we got to look out the window and, and look at the, uh, the eclipse, so it was really fun, but again, kind of glad it's behind us. But I am also pleased to share that the MCAS testing, I, we've, I've talked about this the past few meetings, but it's well underway, and in checking in with principals and some of the folks out in schools, things seem to be going really well. Uh, you always get a little bit anxious about MCAS, mostly because, and I'm sure that Mr. Oliver is going through this right now, because it's so heavily reliant on technology, and we all know that, um, technology, as wonderful it is, as it is, can sometimes, uh, cause us some, some issues, so I'm sure you've been out and about in your school buildings as well. Um, I'm going to continue to remind folks about kindergarten registration, uh, as we discussed, it's important that if you have a kindergarten child who will be five years old before September 1st, 2024, please register them as soon as possible, and if you have any neighbors or friends that you know may have a child who is kindergarten ready, please go ahead and encourage them to register as soon as possible. I know that we've had quite a few folks take advantage of that, and we're about to start, um, assigning schools to those stu, to the students, so the sooner that we get kids registered, the better. Just a reminder as well, we'll be hosting a district-wide kindergarten showcase that will be at the Quinn School on May 15th at 6:00 PM. Again, an opportunity for incoming kindergarten families to hear an overview of what can be expected, and for kindergarten parents, especially parents who haven't been family members, who haven't had children, starting kindergarten, it can be quite an emotional experience, so the more opportunities we have to invite people in to hear about what those experiences will be like, the more comfortable that transition is going to be come August, September. So I also want to, to mention that we are in the midst now, I'm so happy to be able to say that, of strategic planning, we have met, uh, a few of our school committee members are on that team, really grateful to have you there, uh, you know, we've partnered with Teaching Learning Alliance, and what I think has been a really smooth start to the planning process, uh, given that we've invited so many other stakeholders into this process, so we have about 37-plus people who are participating in this process, and one of the questions was, how did we select folks to be part of this? I remind people that there was a core group of people who invested, who were already invested in this work through Portrait of a Learner, and so that most of those people are still part of the Strategic Planning Committee, a few may have stepped away, and others were invited in, but I think that, um, that what we did to expand membership was reaching outside of the schools themselves, and including our school committee members, including we have, um, again, it seems like Terry Himm's getting a lot of positive attention, but she, this evening at our school committee meeting, but grateful to have her participate, we have parents, um, so we think that we have a diverse stakeholder group, and the best folks that we have on the team, honestly, are, we have three students.
Unbelievable.
And, uh, they, they certainly are willing to share their experiences and what they think we need to be doing.
They're not bashful.
No, and when I say that, they're respectful.
Yes.
And, uh, what they share with us are, are things that, you know, we as adults can absolutely, um, value, because it's not anything that you would think is outlandish, they really want what's best for, for schools and for the experiences of, of other students at Dartmouth High School. Um, so, we've already met, I think we're, at our next meeting, we're going to discuss mission, which I'm excited about, so there was some talk about, I know we've had a very, um, established, uh, mission statement here in Dartmouth, this is meant to, not to take away from that, but to be more inclusive of you, I think somebody said it, this isn't the last time the mission statement was revisited, may have been, I'm not really sure, maybe 20 years ago, so it's, it's a good time for us to be examining what the mission is of, of schooling for today's youth. So we also have a, we have a teaching and learning committee, we have a commu, committee, this is, uh, subcommittees within the strategic planning, so all 37 people are not working on the same thing. So we have a group that's focused on teaching, learning, and leading, we have a group that's focused on community feedback, we have a team looking at facilities, finance, and human capital, uh, you can probably look around and guess who's on what team, um, but yeah, we, we definitely think that, yes, the representation we have is going to allow us to develop what I think is eventually going to be a truly dynamic, five-year strategic plan for the Dartmouth Public Schools, and having community input is critical to that. So, as far as HR work, you see, or maybe you haven't, but we have advertised the position of the Early Childhood Director, so that's gone out, um, and we're excited about advertising and hoping that we get very qualified candidates, we will be putting together, I know Mrs. Denicio's already sent out, uh, a, and, um, survey to staff to ask for their input on what they're looking for in the next Early Childhood Director, and it will be, there will be an inclusive team that will be involved in selecting our next Early Childhood Director, we hope, if all goes well, that we'll be able to introduce that person at one of our, at our May school committee meeting. I'm going to skip over education support professionals, but, you know, we always have and need them, substitutes, we know, and again, uh, the HR work that comes out of the office, especially with Kate, I can't thank her enough for making sure that we stay on track and get people on board, on boarded as soon as possible, I think Mary can probably attest to that, she was on boarded immediately as a school committee member, and had everything she needed to, to get going this evening. So, climate and culture, always great to talk about climate and culture here in Dartmouth, I love that question, why Dartmouth, and you're 100% right, Mr. Oliver, I am so thrilled to be here in Dartmouth, this is a wonderful community, and the schools and the folks in them are doing amazing work, and kids here are just, really, just, just such a joy to be around, um, and we want to keep that going, that's important, and part of the way we do that is through the budget and the way we support the work of strategic planning. But here we are, it's spring, spring sports season has arrived, so I'm in my, this is my first cycle of the spring sports season, even though I was visiting Dartmouth last year around this time, but several competitive teams, so this is really something, we have eighth graders who have joined a few of our teams this year on waivers, Mr. Christofouli has made sure that he's gone through that process, uh, so we have softball, um, we have baseball, girls' lacrosse, boys' lacrosse, girls' outdoor track, boys' outdoor track, unified outdoor track, girls' tennis, boys' tennis, sailing, which is new for me, and I'm being told that I might get to go out and see an actual sailing competition, um, and all, we have 367 students participating in spring sports, so we should, um, be really proud of that. I know when I'm finished, Mr. Nunes is going to share the good news about the color guard and the band's recent accomplishment, so I save that for you, Mr. Nunes. I also want to acknowledge that, and you might have seen it in Dartmouth Week, we had an author's visit that was hosted at the middle school, I want to thank again the Dartmouth, um, Middle School Administration, and in particular, the librarian Laura Gardner, who recognized student interest in a certain author, his name is Dan Gaimanhart, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and she invited him to come to speak to Dartmouth Middle School students. Mr. Gaimanhart, that's a tough one, his books, and, um, he talked about this, and he focused on, um, giving students a message that was around the importance of hard work and perseverance, even in the face of rejection, and he was able to share how many times the books that he had written were rejected by publishers, before he finally had his first book published, and now he is a nationally known author, with several books that many of our middle schoolers are enjoying, um, so that's great, again, a great lesson, not just for the students, but for all of us. Also, Mr. Paradi informed me just before, uh, we started school committee, that four of our students are finalists for producing a video around burn awareness, and that's what the, the firefighters, they submit the video, they submitted, I think he said about eight to 10 videos, and two were selected, and they'll be wrecked. And they'll be recognized April 30th at Children's Hospital in Boston. So, another, again, example of how our Dartmouth students shine. And finally, the trip to Spain and Portugal. It's really going to happen. They, the students, forty-five students and seven adults, will be leaving from Dartmouth High School on Saturday at 12:00. If any of you want to try to stow away, I'm not sure how far you'll get, but I think that everyone is really excited to see how that trip goes, and I mean that genuinely. Mr. Shea has also informed us that there'll be a social media link available via Instagram, and that you can pick up this link through, there'll be a DHS travel link on the, on our website page. So, we'll be able to see some of what the students are up to. So, we're really excited about that trip.
Yep.
Maybe next year, one of us will be able to go along.
Wouldn't that be nice?
All right. So, that's all I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the, this past weekend was NSBA finals for both color guard and percussion. On Saturday, up in Salem, both our junior varsity and varsity color guards took first place in their different class divisions that they're in. Our percussion was here, yes, our finals was here yesterday. I can't tell you how many schools, we must have had thirty schools that went through this building yesterday. You talk about, and I've said this before, but you talk about a school building that's being used. I mean, it was great, you know, coming in the side door, when you come up the walk, their big props were coming in and, you know, stored down in a corner. We had tables set up, you know, the marimbas, and they're walking this way, the students are walking in the other, you know. And, you know, yes, all three will meet at some point in time, but they love being here, going, you know, different areas of the school that they're set for warm-ups. But they come in, you know, right over here, perform, and go right, you know, right out the door to their trucks and that type of deal. And it was, it's absolutely great. But, you know, our percussion won their class. They had the high score of the night. Percussion on Saturday is going to be down in West Hill High School, down in Sanford, right to the, right on the New York border, for the MAC finals. And that, our varsity color guard leaves tomorrow night, 7:00 for Dayton, Ohio, for their WGI finals. And they start their performances somewhere around quarter of one on Thursday. So, they'll travel Tuesday night, they'll get there Wednesday, rehearse, and then, you know, start Thursday, Thursday at, you know, quarter of twelve, quarter of one or so with theirs. The varsity leaves, the percussion leaves next Wednesday for Dayton, for their shot. So, wish them well. And, you know, I had spring sports, but Dr. Saban McGuire talked about that, and that's fine. Hopefully, just the weather will hold out so that they can play.
Yeah. Jeez. Agreed. That's right. Thank you, Mr. Nunes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
I do not have anything at this time. I think I've said enough tonight. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee is for Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., right here in the Dartmouth High School Library and Media Center. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of an update on union personnel not to reconvene.
So moved. Second. Motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Coughlin. On the motion, any discussion? Roll call, please. Kate?
Kathleen Amrell?
Yeah.
For Oliver?
Yeah.
Ms. Coughlin?